17, and I'll call the second reading for this afternoon. The order, and Mr. Chris, you're here to do the devotion.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, and to all of the council. It's wonderful to be with you guys again today, just to encourage your hearts and to say a prayer for you and the meeting as well as over our community. I really appreciate this opportunity. I'd like to share a situation that Jesus faced in the ministry. He was, as I read this passage, it's a time when Jesus was set up for failure. It's kind of like challenged him with a question, which was not too unusual, but he's challenged with a question with the intent of he's surely going to mess up in this. And the way that he responds ends up saying, there's a whole lot more to your question than what you're asking. He ends up giving us a good principle by which believers are to live by. And so I picked this up in verse 20 of Luke chapter 20. "So they watched him and sent spies who pretended to be righteous, that they might seize on his words, in order to deliver him to the power and the authority of the government." Then they asked him, saying, "Teacher, we know that you say and teach rightly, and you do not show partial or personal favoritism, but teach the way of God in truth. Is it lawful for us to pay taxes to Caesar or not?" But he perceived their craftiness and said to them, "Why do you test me? Show me a denarius whose image it..." And asks the question, "Whose image and inscription does it have?" They answered and said, "Caesar's." And he said to them, "Ran or therefore to Caesar the things that are Caesar's, and to God the things that are God's." But they could not catch him in his words, in the presence of the people, and they marveled at his answer and kept silent. It's very evident in Scripture that God is the one who sets government authorities. Even tonight, Alex, you representing the council. I do agree with, the Lord has put you in this position. He raises up leaders, government authorities, and as citizens, we trust them, we respect them, honor them, and even as believers, whether you're a Christian or not a Christian, the call is to honor those in authority. But the challenge was, in appearance, it's like, isn't there a separation between church and state? Now, we know we have that in our freedoms, our Declaration of Independence, we have, you know, it's certainly in our history that it was put there for a good reason. But when God is coming from, as God's not saying, "I'm calling for a difference between church and state," I'm not calling for separation, I'm calling for those who are of my people to represent me well. So let me give you an example. With the coin, he says, "Whose image is it?" "It's Caesar's image," which simply means, "It's an earthly thing, do what's needed to be done with that which is of the earth." He says, "But anyone, anything that belongs to God, surely do it according to who you belong to." That face of Christ in our lives and how we deliberate, the face of Christ to be seen and how we treat situations. Well, let's put it this way. Integrity, character. It's not because of the earthly things that we want to have good integrity, it's because of Christ in us. We want to represent Him. Love, making peace wherever possible. These are all things that God challenged His people, who bear His face in everything that they do. And so with that, I want to challenge you and pray that blessing for each of you, that you would represent God well in your community with the call that He gave you to serve. And I do thank everyone in this for your services to our community. Let's bow our heads. Father, I thank you so much. Thank you for our mayor, for our council, and for the leadership that they offer. They do not sit before us as perfect people, they do not claim to understand or to know all things, but nor do they are in a position that they represent this community or make decisions in the best interest of this community. But how do we arrive at those decisions, Lord? Oftentimes, Lord, bears what face we serve, whether it's the face of man, the face of government. But do we recognize that we are here to represent the Lord? So God, I pray blessings upon them, Lord, their integrity will be one that honors you and that others to love one another, where they peace wherever possible. God, let Your light shine in their lives. We thank you for the blessings of our community, our first responders, Lord, keep them safe and, Lord, go with them on every call. Lord, we thank you for the blessing of the Lord upon our businesses, we need it so much. God, be glorified in all things. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Chris. Ms. Keisha, you're called.
Ms. Brown.
Here.
Police chief.
Agent Lee.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Agent Wilkerson.
Here.
Alex Jones.
Here.
We have established that we have a quorum. Next item on the agenda is to adopt tonight's agenda.
Ms. Maryland, make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Just a second.
Have a motion and a second to adopt tonight's agenda as written.
I'll pass this up, Brian, before we take the vote. I can't amend the agenda tonight because of special calls, but just y'all take that in. That wouldn't be on the workday agenda.
Do you have one?
No.
Did you have a minute?
Yeah.
This is an item that I had been wanting to add to the agenda, but given the special call meeting, he's not able to add to the agenda, so we'll be prepared to talk about it later.
Okay. Did we vote to adopt the agenda?
No.
Okay. Ms. Keisha, you call the roll on adopt agenda.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
We adopted the agenda as written. First item tonight will be public hearing on the rezoning of 1008 North Walnut Street. And I'll open the floor for any public comments in regards to the public hearing for the rezoning. Does anybody have any comments outside of the regular agenda on the public hearing? If not, I will close the public hearing. Ms. Keisha, please record that we didn't have any public comments, and I will ask for a motion on the second reading of ordinance 092021-1.
A motion that we passed on second reading of ordinance 092021-1.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Ms. Wilkerson and a second by Mr. Brown on the rezoning of 1008 North Walnut Street. Do we have any comments or...
You know what we're talking about here.
Who?
That question.
This way, before the planning's on.
Yeah, right.
And don't feel like if you are not comfortable voting or something, please, you know, feel like you have to. Okay? So in this matter, you are aware, you're part of the planning zone. So, okay. I have motion and a second. Ms. Keisha, follow the roll.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Okay. Motion on the second reading of ordinance 092021-1 has passed. Thank you, Ms. Mary Gill, for undertaking this process and looking forward to your work.
And I will buy the first cup of coffee.
You may be too late. You may be too late.
I think she's going to give the first cup of coffee, but shot free samples.
Okay. The second item on the agenda is a second public hearing that we've been through once before, I believe, but we decided to redo it again to make sure we had it covered. Public hearing is open for the rezoning of 6628 Highway 31, a property belonging to Ms. Jason Henson. Does anyone here in the audience have any comments related to the second public hearing?
I have no comment.
Okay.
They should be 17, 17 Pleasant Road Road also. It's not just 60. It's both.
Same address, two parcels.
Is that the paperwork that we have turned into this for the...
I thought the 1717 was already zoned correctly, and I just wanted you to get this rezoned.
One of the two of them is zoned correctly currently.
It was, it was zoned correctly?
One of the two of them was previously zoned correctly.
That is correct.
The one that was not.
Was, okay. And we had the address wrong at the previous agenda, and that's why we redone it, because the public notices were for the wrong address. So now that we're right. That's correct. Okay. So, okay, so I'll close the floor on the public comments for the second public hearing for tonight, and I'll open the floor for motions for the second reading of ordinance 092021-2.
Also moving on that motion.
Okay. We have a motion.
A second.
And a second for the rezoning of the property to C2. Ms. Keisha, call the roll.
Brown?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Motion passes forward. That concludes the public hearing portion of tonight's agenda, and I don't have... Who signed up for public comments?
Me.
Okay. I'll watch you guys' floor.
Okay, in the charter, it states that there's supposed to be written notification of the meetings handed out to each one of the council members. Was that done this time?
No.
So is this supposed to even be happening tonight?
That's a question for our attorney. Notice was posted on social media and on the Newark City Hall. We've not always given...
The charter states in section 10, page 11, I cannot believe, that it's supposed to be a written notice handed out by the police department to each individual council member.
We got a notice for the special call meeting.
For tonight?
I believe so. Did we not receive that already?
I was thinking with you, I don't believe it was delivered from the police department.
No, ma'am. It was delivered a week earlier.
But the night of the original meetings, we made very clear that in the public forum that this meeting may be held tonight. That that can be construed as sufficient public notice, but as I said, that's a question for the attorney.
Well, my main concern about this is that if you're not willing to uphold the rules that you voted in, even like, what are we doing? You're the ones that voted it in, you're standing mayor, you have to go by the rules too.
The night we didn't have the quorum, we publicized the fact that we were having the meeting.
But publicly having it on Facebook is not the way the charter says it's supposed to be done.
You're correct.
Well, I just wanted it to be wrong record, that it wasn't supposed to happen that way.
Okay. Ms. Tammy, you're on the list for public comments.
I'm good.
Ms. Krista?
She had to leave.
She did not. Ms. Vicky, you're on the list of public comments. Does anyone else have any public comments they'd like to make? Okay, we will close the public comments portion of this agenda, and we will move into the approval of minutes. On your agenda, you have a typo that says that the first set of minutes is the 23rd and exactly the 16th. So if anyone would like a corrected copy of that, Ms. Keisha will provide it. Do I have a motion for minutes for the 916?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve minutes from the September 16th, 2021, West Morris City Council meeting.
Sir.
Okay. We have a motion by Mr. Brown and a second by Mr. Lee to approve the 91621 council minutes. Ms. Keisha, follow.
Jones?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Okay. Next is the minutes for the 92921 special call meeting.
I meant that we approved the 92921 special call meeting minutes.
Sir.
We have a motion and a second for the 921, 92921 special call minutes. Ms. Keisha?
Brown?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
I'm staying because I wasn't present.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Okay. The vote is three and one staying. The minutes to the special call meeting have passed. Now the next item on the agenda is the September 2021 financial statement, and Ms. Keisha, would you like to speak to your account from the financial statement?
Can you just hand them questions about the events on here?
So no one had any questions, but I won't, I don't require you to read it, but...
No questions, I'll be up to answer.
We'll make a motion to accept the September 21 financial statement as written.
Okay. Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Lee made a motion to approve the financial statement. Mr. Brown seconded that motion. Ms. Keisha, call the roll.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Motion passes. Financial statement for September 2021 has been approved. Under old business, we have the sewer plant bar screen, influent screen upgrade. I believe everyone was here when Mr. Logan spoke about that and have had extensive information presented by a human person and by email about what this concerns. I think I have to show you all that. We both were in the handles prior to, and if anybody, will I make a motion, then we'll get into the discussion. Somebody can make a motion and get into the discussion. Do I have a motion to upgrade the influent bar screen at the new sewer plant? So we don't have anyone that will make a motion for the upgrade of the bar screen at the sewer?
I'll make a motion to upgrade the bar screen at the sewer plant.
Okay.
We'll second it for discussion.
Okay. Mr. Jones made the motion to upgrade the bar screen, and Mr. Lee seconded his motion, and now we can open the floor for discussion.
One of the biggest concerns is obviously the cost. Another cost breakdown for the bar screen upgrade is for the Parkinson motor drum. We all got the upgrade packet, and it, you know, it comes to a total of $82,000, and we mentioned that, I believe it was the engineer that said that we would have to take an additional loan for that $82,000. And, you know, I would, I would really like to know more about the effectiveness of the upgrade compared to what would, and I thought I had a pretty good idea, but then I was second guessing myself, I'll just be honest, but I just don't know if it's worth the money. So that's where I'm at.
Okay. So you guys have any comments about it?
Yeah.
I can see a benefit in the future where it could pay off. I mean, we've, right now, you know, you've mentioned that it's required, required that we have to have someone there over the weekend and whatnot to monitor the plant and whatnot. But in the future, there's nothing saying that those requirements won't be lifted. Once we get the new sewer plant installed and completed, and they do a final inspection and say we're, you know, groovy, you know, they could come in and say, hey, that's no longer a need, and this would help to facilitate keeping someone having to come in and do maintenance on the weekend, eliminate some overtime. I mean, that in itself will save payroll, save budget of dollars. I mean, I, I get there are parts on it that are moving and operational, I mean, you're going to have a cost in electricity on this versus not on the other, but as a whole for the entire plant, I can't imagine it to be marginal at best, you know, and marginal increase. So I, I think it would be a good investment for the sheer fact that if the sewer guys are not having to spend that time cleaning and performing routine maintenance on it as much, they can spend those labor hours elsewhere. I think the opportunity cost warrant the upgrade.
And I agree, I was, that's part of my debate, you know, that you have the $82,000, but then you also have some of the less maintenance features that, like you mentioned, Alex, so that's, that's a good point. I found that valid in myself.
Another thing that was brought up and mentioned was that, you know, this one would essentially be more or less fail, basically fail proof as far as spillage goes. The opportunity for spillage is much less with the upgraded screen, where the one in the existing plant is purely gravitational flow, and if those screens get boogered up, the opportunity for spillage increases. I mean, I, those fines that come with that are going to be substantial, so more so than what the cost of this upgrade would be.
Those screens are going to be installed regardless, right?
Only one of them.
They're one of the other.
Two screens, and one of them will remain a manual screen as a...
As a backup or maintenance purposes.
You know, I cut out the...
But to expand on some of the stuff that we probably already talked about a little bit, that the one advantage, I feel like with all the information that they have provided about the upgrade on the screen is, even that's kind of inconclusive, but the type of material that we're feeding the plant with our aged collection system, that the upgraded bar screen would potentially save on wear and tear of the other components of the new plant, but we're unaware this time that that type of material is actually going through the plant. In other places in other communities where they have this particular bar screen, there's certain types of aggregate that naturally go into their system that I've been unable to identify that we have. They said we don't have the same problem, for example, Triborough County does with the natural sediments and things going through the system, and that's just a geographical thing. But it does save their system quite a bit of wear and tear, and they have an aging sewer system, collection system, just like we do. So that's the only benefit I see, because it's in the long run, it's, you know, not, it's creating cost for the electricity and stuff, and it still will have to be cleaned and maintained, even though it is not as very intensive as the manual. And from what I know about the process too, now they spend, they do spend significant time on that task, but it's truly minimal, what they do. If they do it regularly and routinely, it's only 15 minutes or so out of their rotation and their routine for time that they're spending. So they might do it a couple times a day, but that's in addition to the other meetings that they do as well.
Right. My biggest thing is with the, you know, the opportunity for spillage and the fines that are associated with that being upwards of $100,000. You know, that's, you pay for yourself one time if it prevents one spill.
Would this upgraded system, if I'm guaranteed that would happen as well?
Well, but it's, it's much less likely.
And Mr. Logan Dickerson did sit here and speak with us at length at the last meeting, and he said, without the upgrade, that we would be just as well off, and, you know, he's the big engineer that is paid to tell us.
Oh, I think it was worth it. Right, and they've got different versions of the screen, and I'm sure, I mean, I know they figured it with whichever one would be sufficient to operate with whatever flows going through the plant.
From the things I know about that engineering firm, I'm not keen on their word right now.
That's why I said it is a very difficult decision, it's a very costly decision to be making at this point in the process, and we tried to make the decision prior to tonight. And just so everyone knows, the manufacturing of this, the system as it is currently designed is on hold until we make this decision, which could potentially hold up, hold the law of manufacturing of the plant up. And if it waits much longer, we will incur some additional cost if we proceed with the upgrade because of the manufacturing of the previous part.
So have they already has, I guess it's GMC, have, is the redesign ready so as soon as we vote it does go forward? Is it going to take the time to have to do that?
From what I understand, just the manufacturing of the original part, I mean, they've already calculated their fees for this part of it.
Is the redesign already ready for them to put into place, or are we going to have to sit and wait for them to redesign? That's what I...
That's a good question. What he has sent us is just their preliminary parts from, designs from manufacturer. So, I mean, that's a good question to find out, but...
How long will it take them to redesign and get this in place then?
Well, that's what I'm saying, the whole process is on hold, so we'll call for a vote. Okay? I will get that information and find out regardless, because if we vote this upgrade down, for example, we still need that information to know how soon it will be proceeded. So one way or the other, I will get a handle on that. Okay? Mr. Lee, call for it. Ms. Keisha, call the roll.
Brown?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes forward to zero. I will let the engineering firm know in the morning that we have decided to proceed with the upgraded bar screen, influent bar screen. That is the only old business item on the agenda. We will move forward now to the new business, and the first item on the agenda. New business is the uniform for public works. Aaron spoke to all of us about this workday. Aaron, if you want to come up here, ask anyone, have any additional questions?
I'll make a motion to default the uniform for Aaron.
I will second the motion.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to provide these uniforms to the public works employees, and go ahead and move into the comments portion of this.
Aaron, you did find a motion, would the budgets take care of this?
Yes, sir.
Because we have to hear about it, the radio line, is that?
Yes.
Okay. So we're not needing...
We're not needing the radio line.
Okay.
And Ms. Keisha looked it up in the budget. I believe that particular expense has been three years since we paid anything out of that line.
Okay, because their trucks were taken care of and they had.
Yes. The one thing that I want to comment about, well, there's two things. The first thing is Aaron gave us a quote, the original quote, and then a question was asked about the state bid. So there was some concern that what was going on with, that the fact that we didn't get the state bid, even though they are on the state bid. And he went back and talked to them, and they gave him an additional quote, provided that the state bid information. And through conversation with Aaron, found out that they didn't know we were a state agency when he asked for the original price, and that's why when he got the second price, they were... And that's why when he got the second price, they were aware of that information, but he also didn't know, communicate with. So, it wasn't their fault that they didn't give us the state bid, it was just they didn't know that we were a state agency to give us that price. And there wasn't a whole lot of difference in the price anyway, you know, but.
Four dollars.
But that's, that clears up the confusion to why we didn't initially receive the state bid to start with. And my second concern was, we're three months into the budget and we had the budget discussions and we asked everybody to come forward at that time when they typed in the request. And we did not have this discussion. But the money's there and if, if he needs any additional supplies or radio expense, we may have to revisit this conversation. But this is just for this remainder of this budget year is the only time of this contract, right?
No, this will be a contract, contract. So, it will, like I said, it may, it will have to be placed into the next three-year account.
Okay, because I think, we, we had that discussion at the time, they weren't clear, but it was just for this remainder of the budget year.
So, it's a yearly contract or is it a two-year?
Uh, I think it's actually like thirty because they said that, uh, in order to do it as cheap as they do it, uh, they have to extend the contract to be able to pay and actually start making money. It's that, from what I understand, it's, it's like a year and a half before they're gonna make the profit off of it.
And, and you did say that, of course, that accounts for the sizes of new employees.
And this will, like, just say, the two guys here tonight, he's six-two, I'm five-ten, you know? If I quit, then we're not gonna get charged, they'll just take my uniform, resize him or whoever it is and then they'll, uh, provide.
So, it's for this, so many uniforms and then it's.
Right, yeah, correct.
You went with that one, didn't you, one of, you, you first proposed?
Yes, it'll be the.
Could it reflect her?
It'll be the reflected shirt like we are now. And it'll be native and some of these, what they told me would be the best for what style we're doing. And then it'll be, uh, like an I D jacket.
It's definitely safety, it's a safety concern, now it's out there in the dark and, you know, I wouldn't see your, your uniform, our uniform, engineer's uniform, sorry. It's gonna be nice to have, you know, any, any other, you know, city has their, their public works folks have uniforms and they're not having to go pitch out your own money for that, so.
And we can also put our logo on it if we wanted to put a logo, you know, say it was more, so we can have a logo or something on this, if that's a place.
Anybody else have any questions? Just be aware that this will be a commitment from next year's budget contractually, so.
It'll actually be for the next five years, according to this right here.
I knew it was quite a long time.
Then, all of us set through the budget process, let's just know that sometimes those niggas and dimes can come and go quickly during the counterbalance of the budget, so. So, anyway, Ms. Keesha, caller, oh.
Jones.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, uh, thank you. Give me back the thing.
Yep.
The next item on the agenda is to set the pay for, uh, Mr. Gatwood. It was discussed at the work study that he would perform the job description as amended that I provided to everyone. And the only amendment was that the city owns the digital data and that he will do his job and create during his job. So, all of this going to be discussed with him previously and it was updated with him. And he's asking for nineteen dollars an hour and then a dollar for each of the, uh, one if not two required, uh, certifications he'll have to have to successfully do his job.
I'll make the motion to, you know, start right there. If we're there at nineteen dollars an hour as the, uh, codes inspector, property managers, whatever else that job description is required. And once he receives those two required certifications, that he gets a dollar each certification.
Second.
I just want to clarify that, that is two certifications, right? And beyond that, you'll have to come back to talk to us.
Okay.
Have a motion and a second to, uh, have Mr. Gatwood move into the codes and safety, uh, directors position for about ten dollars an hour and approval for a dollar each for two certifications. Ms. Keesha, caller, oh.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes four to one. You could get him further into what he's already started. The next item on the agenda is, uh, Zach, Zachary Culberson, part-time to full-time, animal control lead officer. Come up and speak with us. He spoke with us at the, uh, work study, I just wanted to make sure that we were all still under understanding.
Let's put a motion on the floor.
I'll make a motion that we hire Zachary Culberson from part-time to full-time and being the lead person for animal control city must want.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. I just wanted to make sure that you will be compiling the report to, reporting directly to us or through the chief to give us those reports on a timely manner.
Yes, sir.
That was the only question that I had, that we needed to really make sure. And you will be, uh, on call and, uh, be able to be here in the city. And you'll be able to, uh, potentially transport those animals as necessary to the county under control, potentially at any time.
Right.
Correct? Does everybody have that understanding?
I thought we had that understanding in the work study.
Well, I just making sure that it's part of the process that we voted on, so.
I believe we, we would like the, I, I think as our understanding, we would like the reports, um, monthly on the, at the work study. But I believe that, is everybody okay with that?
Or, or prior to.
Prior to.
So.
And that can be emailed to make it, you know, it's not personal.
Yes, I, I agree, uh, email's fine, you can, uh, if chief wants to email it to us. However you guys work that system, I don't care, that's up to you guys.
I'll have him get that information to me and I'll make sure that you all get it.
There you go, that's fine, chief, thank you. Thanks.
Appreciate it. We have a motion and a second. So, caller, oh.
Lee.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes four to one. Thank you. The, uh, the next item on the agenda is to hire Jonathan Brown full-time. Mr. Brown was not at the work study, so I asked Aaron to have him come tonight, I don't know, yes, presumably?
So, Jonathan, you'll stand up.
You can come up here and introduce yourself.
This is Jonathan Brown.
Are we here?
No.
Aaron Brown's getting here on that.
That time to find that out.
Yeah, I'm gonna make a motion to hire Jonathan Brown full-time public works.
Fourteen fifty per hour?
Yeah.
That's what we discussed it then.
Okay.
Need to be part of the motion, so. We have a motion to hire Mr. Brown, do I have a second?
Motion. Oh, I'll sure will.
We have a motion and a second to hire Mr. Brown, fourteen fifty, uh, an hour. You are aware of what ingredients that we do.
Yes.
Okay. I'm uncertain today that you agree with the job description. At this time, or hey, when you feel that the application, Ms. Keesha, you have any?
Uh, well, I'm, the, uh, I want to go do my paperwork for the door tests and the background check stuff, once you get through them. Uh, I have with me in the drawer.
Okay, uh, before you, uh, when, when are you able to start this position?
I'd like to give my previous job a two weeks' notice, but this week I'm on vacation. So, next Monday I would be able to give a two weeks' notice and start on the fifteenth, I believe.
And I respect it, but.
Yeah, that's, that's fine, we just, we've kind of been more specific, so we're doing here, that's fine, ask you please.
Yeah, because I'll hopefully be signed if you did.
That's the leave here, yeah.
Really appreciate you coming to work for us and, Aaron, we really appreciate you helping us with it. Okay, we have a motion and a second to hire Mr. Brown, Ms. Keesha, caller, oh.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Motion passes four to one, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Do we know what side you're in for me?
Thing.
I'm gonna make a motion, hire this next fellow to part-time.
Okay, uh, the next item on the agenda is to hire, uh,
Kevin.
Mr. Kevin Van Winkle, part-time public works, and this is for twelve dollars an hour. And, uh, before we make the motion, just want to make sure that everyone understood that this position is not a budgeted position. Ms. Keesha has provided the notice for everyone to know where this would stand, uh, and I believe you have that information. When I spoke to her last, he would make this one amount of forty dollars over provided that he works for thirty-two or twenty-eight hours.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four hours, okay. So, just wanted to make sure.
Well, most times at the end of the year, there's room, money that can be moved around, but.
Well, I suppose I did want to make sure that, like, that this is a non-budgeted position and everybody was aware of that.
Did you make the motion, Mr. Lee?
Yes.
We don't have a second.
So, okay. Ms. Lee made a motion, do I have a second for this?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Lee and a second by Mr. Jones to hire, uh, Mr. Van Winkle, twelve dollars an hour, uh, part-time. Does anybody have any more questions or anything they'd like to ask? I do feel like that, uh, the department would benefit from this position. Because in a lot of miscellaneous things that they do, that they have not been able to do, uh, timely or consistently. Because he does get around to a lot of stuff, but this position will help free up someone that can do more things and help overall. And I believe the over in the budget in this case will be beneficial to the whole process. So, we have a motion and a second, Ms. Keesha, caller, oh, please.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Okay. Make sure, when are you ready to start? Make sure you sign up the job description and visit him and Ms. Keesha before he starts. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is preparing as well is annual water meter test. And, uh, this came at the work study and, uh, he, you actually put it in the packet for the council meeting after the work study, it's up there.
I believe that is correct.
So, we, we've not talked about this prior to tonight, but, as I spoke to Aaron today, the, uh, he didn't have to do any meter testing last year and the individual that did the meter testing the year before is no longer available to do those meter tests. And, uh, there is not a line item in the budget for the four thousand seven hundred dollars, but there is five thousand dollars in the budget. What was it, Ms. Keesha, that we talked about today, what is the specific?
Water studies?
Water studies, which was the water sewer rate study that we did three years ago. And that's not, we've not agreed to do a water study at this time, but that's what that money was used for, that money. If y'all make the motion to do so, we pay for these, uh, meter tests.
Yeah, it's underwater, uh, line item number five sixty-six.
Five sixty-six.
Oh, page eleven.
I got a feeling that this is a necessary expense, I'll make the motion to, to the annual water meter test.
If you want to take the five sixty-six.
Just give a second.
That's as a part of the motion?
Yes, yes.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to do the annual water meter test and the contract is four dollars, seven hundred dollars. And there will be, there's some miscellaneous, uh, responsibilities in those tests that are included in the contract. I think that's it, everybody has that, so.
Just come back and check for it.
Yes.
W S O, marches in the process.
Yes, uh, client development, field testing and data analysis are the three main points of this contract. We're honored to be reading the meters and handling the information over.
This company comes highly recommended from City of Galton, well, they got their water loss down quite good using this company. Uh, they also do, uh, leak detecting and things of that nature. Since, I actually sent this out an email, they reached out to me again. And, uh, we're glad we had a water leak that we've been looking for for about six months and, uh, can't find it because it's underground somewhere. They actually have a leak detecting dog that they can bring them and they said, uh, for about a day, they could offer us to our whole entire system with this dog. And I seen the dog at the expo, uh, last year, it's pretty amazing, I mean, he's just smelling for chlorine, so, but it's pretty great. So, it's, it's pretty great. But, um, that was one of the things that they did offer is going through that situation as well. But they also did regular standard leak detecting, pit bottom and everything.
Aaron, is this, uh, the total cost, is it, I didn't see it, but it goes obviously for, when we, if we pass it, it goes from the beginning, whenever you get the contract signed with them? It goes from one annual year to the next, or does it start in January, does it work?
So, um, it would actually be, I think it's at my.
Does it start with this week?
Somewhere around in there, some, something like that, I'm not exactly sure, I'll have to know. I'll have to check on that to make sure, but I do know that I do, I had to have it done this year.
Okay.
And, uh, uh, so I, I had been trying to get in touch with the company that used to do it and, uh, they, uh, won't enter meter, call me back, so I'm just assuming that they are not interested in doing it anymore or not doing it anymore, so. So, that's when I started looking around and I reached out to the Fed, Portland, Galton, and, um, they all, um, kind of gave me different people. And then when I talked to Galton, they gave me these people and, uh, they, uh, they highly recommended for a whole, not just for meter testing.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but the reason there was no meter testing last year was because we had a master meter changed out and they accepted that as.
Correct, yes.
While that was necessary.
That's because of the replacement of the meter. And it's actually just the master meter that has to be tested, but, um, I have four master meters in our system. And I would, I'm wanting to test them all this year because they've not been tested, all of them have not been tested since I've been here that I know of.
And that's part of the surprise, right? We have a motion and a second, does anybody have any more questions? Ms. Keesha, caller, oh.
Wilkerson.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Motion passed. The next item on the agenda is resolution R zero, R one zero two, zero two, one dash one, I think I said that correctly. Uh, the property conservation item grant, we've applied for this every year. I'm not certain we received it every year, but it's a fifty-fifty matching grant for up to fifteen hundred dollars. And the grant, if we get the whole thing, it's, it would be two thousand dollars. And I'm uncertain what particularly we will apply for.
We did the, uh, document conservation, that's what we asked for.
I'll, I'll make a motion that we, um, pass resolution R one zero two zero two one dash one, the property conservation matching grant program.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, Ms. Keesha, is there any more discussion? Ms. Keisha, is there any more discussion? Ms. Keisha Calderon.
Jones?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Motion passes. The next item on the agenda tonight is to accept the paving bids.
I just figured I'd stand by.
Harry was here with us at the bid opening, Ms. Keisha was here for bid opening and Ms. Lee, you were here at the bid opening. And I think I have provided you all with the email with the recommendation from the city engineer.
Right.
Your recommendation and I can go ahead and say that his recommendation is not the lowest bid, it is the lowest guaranteed bid for this paving season that potentially will not be increased with material costs if we wait till spring and that technically was the reason for his recommendation of going with Rogers Group.
And I'm gonna make the motion to go with Rogers Group on this here at the bid price of one hundred fifty-eight thousand, six hundred twenty-nine dollars and fifty-eight cents.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for a motion for Rogers Group to do the paving at hundred fifty-eight thousand, six hundred twenty-nine dollars and fifty-eight cents? I didn't write the eight cents down.
Fifteen cents.
Fifteen cents, well, that's fine. So we have a motion and a second. Now we all want to discuss this.
Aaron, how quick did Ed Gisom's get with the talk, though?
Yes, he said that they would get it as soon as possible and right now they're working on the Fed, so he might wait and swing through here once they get done with that, but he couldn't give an exact date, just do, cause you don't know what the weather is.
Okay. His contract says forty-five days from the day we awarded the contract, so it could happen, however, with rapidly changing weather, we have the right to delay him in the process till spring happens and that's what we're trying not to do here.
And Scott, it's good he can give us that motion guarantee.
That is correct, they could not and...
Scott, he's pretty much, you know, told me that he did feel comfortable, let me get that.
That's correct. And then, and is all of y'all aware that we had budgeted more money than this for this paving project?
So I go back into general fund when we get through?
Well, that's...
I'm glad you were proud, I even know the street yourself.
That's what, that's what I'm bringing up to you. The project was bid in a way where if it went over what we allocated, we could deduct portions of the project off the bid to...
Get it below the price that we're budgeting.
However, since we're way under budget, there are additional streets that the engineer has quoted and I think all of y'all have that information and when he's here on site, we have the ability to allow him to continue on.
Like the, what would be during...
And they're willing to do that then, right?
We don't know for certain.
Oh, okay.
But I've not had that discussion with them, but while they're here, they're more active than not and as I said, we do have a certain amount of roads engineered for them to continue that have not been bid, so I don't know exactly how we received that, but while they're here, they, we can win their contract to continue on after the down, that we have the... So we have a motion and a second for that. Ms. Keisha Calderon.
Jones?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Okay, Rogers Group has been awarded a paving contract. I'm sure we'll get the paperwork signed as soon as we can get it in front of us and get the really moving on.
You take that tomorrow.
We're on track. It's probably on my desk right now to be signed. The next item on the agenda is something we did not discuss at the work study, but I felt like it was a safety concern, so I allowed it to be put on the agenda. It comes to Mr. Lee's attention after we're done speaking and signs at Ridgecrest.
It did and well, I would make a motion to establish a speed limit at Ridgecrest for twenty miles an hour speed limit as recommended by Chief Judd.
It was for fifteen miles an hour.
Okay, let me clarify, you need us to get a motion first, sort of, make a motion.
Just a second. Can I make a motion?
Yeah, yeah. Okay, we have a motion and a second for twenty miles an hour. The information that I...
No, you need a motion for fifteen miles an hour because the resolution states that you are lowering the speed limit from twenty miles an hour to fifteen miles an hour.
We have the motion for fifteen, you said twenty, right?
Twenty, yes, as recommended by the chief.
That's what I said, so that's why I gotta clear it.
Well, effectively right there.
What we discovered in research of this, that the actual speed limit is, is it thirty or twenty?
It's thirty if it's not posted on a residential street in the state of Tennessee.
Okay, I was under the impression it was twenty, so if it was twenty and it was going to remain twenty, we didn't have to have a motion or even do an ordinance.
It was, it's not marked, it's never been marked, so that means it's thirty, that's way too fast.
As I said, I was under the impression it was twenty and we wouldn't have to do anything if we, but you're wanting it to be twenty in order.
Twenty, yeah.
Okay, so Ms. Keisha can change the speed limit on that, so.
I think fifteen probably would be too slow.
But that's the reason I wrote it up as fifteen is because if it was twenty, we wouldn't have to do anything, so I wrote it up at fifteen so we could have a resolution. At twenty, but now we'll have to, if it is twenty instead of thirty, we'll have to go home. And Ms. Keisha can change the number. So we have a motion and a second for twenty miles an hour posted and not thirty and I've had requests for some different place signs to be posted there and we verified that that was marked a problem, I wonder if they're maintaining. So that was a big question about part of this as well.
You probably can delay without a motion.
That's what I said, it's just what request I had.
There's no law that would be on the city if we post those signs, that's what we verify.
So we have a motion and a second for twenty miles an hour.
As recommended by the chief.
As recommended by the chief. Okay, Ms. Keisha Calderon.
Brown?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Okay, we'll get those posted as soon as we can, if Aaron can get them ordered. Do you have any, Aaron?
We may have one or two opted by, I'll know something by tomorrow, if not, I'll have them ordered by tomorrow.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is waiver of a special event permit for the Chamber of Commerce, three seven eight six miles and we've actually added the DFW letters parade on the list to fill out the applications since the other applications that...
Well, we can do that now. DFW.
It's a small agenda.
As I said, adding it to the pile of the permits to be...
But you can include it up with the...
That's right, because it's not, it's not, it's a special call meeting, you're correct.
Yes.
Okay, these notes were written before we had this meeting scheduled, so.
I make the motion to waive the special event permits for Chamber of Commerce and three seven eight six miles.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to waiver the special event permits for the Chamber of Commerce and three seven eight six miles. Ms. Keisha Calderon.
Brown?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Motion passes, the event permits have been waived. The last item on the agenda is the road closure for Crunker Creek and for the Christmas parade. We've always allowed for this, provided that the fire chief and police chief have been consulted for safety reasons and there have been times that we did not account for it and we've had issues, so I found it was important to put it on the agenda to have it done correctly. So we have a motion for the road closure for Crunker Creek for the Christmas parade.
Other?
Yes. And a motion and a second and they've spoken with you about these items and you're okay with it, okay?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second for the road closures. Ms. Keisha Calderon.
Jones?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes for the road, that motion over. That motion second.